Turn on for silence all cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 6:00 P. M. and also available at viewing for viewing for YouTube. We have two items on the agenda. Was three, but one individual is not able to do presentation tonight. So we'll roll off into the second item on the agenda. Camp Leavenworth update.
Mayor and Commission, this update will cover the current status of continuing items and give you a sneak peek at some of the new items for Camp Leavenworth this year. We are about ninety days out from the festival. The city team has been meeting regularly with O'Neil Events and Management. They just completed a Boulevardia this weekend, so they were a little busy. But I'm happy to share with you the progress we have on event planning so far. So the five K run walk, this was the new item from last year. Local run organizer Christine Frychen has been working hard on this run. We have an improved route since last year. You may recall, we had a stormwater project at Second and Chestnut that impacted the run route. This year, we believe that that project will be completed. So it should be not a double loop, but a single loop along the river there, along Esplanade, and then going south. So we think it'll be an improved route for the five K. Last year, we have about two hundred and fifty attendees. This year, we're hoping to double that and get about five hundred runners and walkers. We think with the pictures from last year, the visibility of the of the event and under eighteen can run free. They have free entry. We think that'll really improve the draw for the five K. And you can also expect to see banners at Tenth Avenue Park and Ray Mueller Park in upcoming months to kind of spur registration. And along with the yard signs, the feedback we got on the run was that the yard signs were the way a lot of folks found out about the run. So you'll continue to see more of those this year. We also plan to share information on the walk, the run walk at Pear Day on Fort Leavenworth and the upcoming FLIX. It's a Fort Leavenworth Communication Sharing Information Meeting. So I'm trying to get the word out on the five K. And a new element this year is we're requesting a military flyover to kick off the start of the run. We don't know what our chances are of making that happen, but we're going to go ahead and put the request in. So that would be kind of fun if that works out. So the music, we tried to put together a well-balanced, fun music lineup. O'Neil or Events Manager, we think really is putting together something good. This year, no major headliners. You recall in twenty twenty-one, we had Melissa Etheridge. And instead, this will really focus on regional bands with a good variety of types. There's Latin jazz with horns, eighties new wave cover band, a country artist from a famous TV show, yacht rock, which I learned is classic soft rock of the seventies and eighties. Those are just some examples of the music lineup that will launch the end of this month or early July. And that does include two local music acts. That will be the Darren Denny Band and the Penny Black Ensemble with Deja. And we moved the Penny Black group to later on the date. It seemed like they were pretty popular and had a good following. So they'll be a little later on in the in the lineup. Craft and food vendors. So so far, we've had five food vendors sign up. We've had five outside craft vendors and we've also had seven local craft vendors. So last year, we had ten local craft vendors sign up. You recall, this is where we tried to draw from local Leavenworth craft vendors and give them their own space and their own kind of branding. We had ten sign up last year, but only ten showed up. So we did raise the booth fee from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars in the hope that that would encourage those who signed up to actually show up at the event. The goal is twenty local craft vendors. That's what we'd love to see is more local participation there to highlight some of our local businesses.
Penny, you said ten signed up and ten came?
Sorry, we had ten sign up last year, but only seven showed up. So that's the reason for the the adjustment of the fee changes. If you are going to be a vendor, we want we want to see you there, especially those local folks. And then the business bulletin board. So we'll continue this again this year. We want to start earlier and increase participation. You can see from the board that there's some some room to grow. We'll work with Main Street and the Chamber for Outreach. And I think we'll continue to position this near the local vendors, just kind of highlighting the local as we have, you know, thousands of people coming into Leavenworth, visiting to get to know our our city a little better and then what businesses that we have. And then we're also working with our two new downtown breweries to see how they can participate. So we'd like to try to have potential to enjoy local beer. We are working through some Kansas Alcoholic Beverage Control questions, but we're working with both of them to try to see how we can make that happen. So optimistic about adding that on as a as a new element. And then activities, both the U. S. Army Office out of Independence, Missouri, and the Kansas National Guard out of Topeka, Kansas, expressed interest in providing activities for Camp Leavenworth. So we're talking about potentials for maybe making ID tags, football toss, cornhole boards. I know in previous year, the Kansas National Guard provided a climbing wall. So we're working with them. Those items for us are at no cost. So it works well as our our costs and our budget tend to increase. That might help offset and allow us to do some other fun elements. And also we to just have some of our local partners be be a part of it. This really is a community event and the military really is part of our local community. And then we're continuing to work on new and expanded activities. So last year, we partnered with the nonprofit Leavenworth Arts, who put together some really fun activities in addition to the chalk art contest. I'll be able to probably share more in the next few months. Some of the activities are brainstorms at this point that we're working on. And I'll include that in the next Camp Leavenworth update to the commission. So those really are the highlights to date on the planning for Camp Leavenworth. If I didn't say it, the dates are the twenty-second, twenty-third. It's Friday and Saturday. It's free entry, open to the public. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the update. The times is changing this year, correct?
I'm sorry, the times of-
The time of the event that's going to be changing.
It will be, it'll end earlier.
Yeah.
What we found is that we initially planned it until eleven o'clock at night, and there just really wasn't that attendance later. So it's really scheduled, top of my head, I know it starts at five, so entry at five. I think the fireworks are scheduled somewhere around eight-thirty, depending on on the dark. Potentially one band after that. So folks want to enjoy the fireworks with their family and come stay after that. There's one band and then probably finished around, I think, nine-thirty. So it'll be a little earlier than it has been in the past.
And that's on Saturday, the fireworks?
The fireworks are Friday.
Okay. And then hopefully still have the, what is that, silent disco? It's always popular.
I mean, there's been several elements of Camp Leavenworth that have been pretty popular. So there'll be the smores, there'll be the silent disco, there'll be tree climbing. So we want to keep the things that we've gotten really good feedback on. At the same time, I think we're always trying to add a little something new. So-
Right, that's great.
For those of us who had smaller children last year, the big blue blocks was sort of this STEM idea of these creative pieces that were on the lawn and kids could come and put them together. And it sounds like over the course of two days, they came or disassembled and put together. So just an example of adding some of those small fun elements. So we're continuing to look at what that might be.
Go ahead.
I don't have it.
Is there anything geared toward the teenagers outside the silent disco?
So I'd say the the festival generally hopefully has an appeal for all ages. It has the food, it has the music. I mean, I think we're always trying to find, you know, what what's a draw for different audiences of all ages. I think we've done a really good job of the sort of the under teenage crowd, some of the bouncy houses and the smores. I'd say for the teenage crowd, I know I've seen a lot of them at the silent disco and and some of that can be a little more fun for for teens. But we're up for ideas. So I think that's something we continue to try to look at is how do we, how do we have it be enjoyable for everyone?
I saw him in the portrait place, too, where they would go in and have their pictures taken.
Was it the first year when they had the axe throwing?
Oh, the axe throwing.
Yeah. Got prohibitively expensive.
I got you, I got you.
I think the liability would be terrific, too.
Understate. Oh, Commissioner Martin, any questions?
Uh, no, actually, no questions right now. I I thought it went down really well, uh, last year and and I'm looking forward to the change up in the five K run this year. And I definitely love the idea of having shooting to see if we can get double this participants in the run this time around. Other than that, I'm I'm good, though.
Any commissioners going to be participating in the five K?
Don't know yet.
All right, no worries. Any questions?
We did less.
How early is it?
You see, it's at eight, isn't it?
This one, the run is scheduled to start a little later. I believe it's ten. That's when we're requesting the flyover.
It's warm. Any other questions? If not, thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. Last item on the agenda, Presentation of Proposed Twenty Twenty Four Operating Budget and the Twenty Twenty Four through Twenty Twenty Eight Capital Improvement Program. Turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Every year during the budget process, sort of the unofficial kickoff is the study session a week before budget meetings. It's the overview of the City Manager's Proposed Twenty Twenty Four Operating Budget and the Five-Year Capital Improvements Program. If you're wondering why it's the City Manager's Proposed Budget, City Code states that the City Manager shall prepare and submit the annual budget to the City Commission for their consideration. So tonight is in fulfillment of that part of the City Code. And again, Commission budget meetings on June thirtieth, starting at eight-thirty A. M. in this room. So I'd like to start with what this is tonight. This is an overview. There will be detail, but detail that leads into the June thirtieth meeting. You see from your budget books, we certainly couldn't get through all the detail tonight. But tonight, we really hit on themes and highlights of the Twenty Twenty Four Operating Budget and the Five-Year Capital Plan. So when the budget management team gets together and starts working at the beginning of the year and working through department heads, we go through a number of steps. The first one is the budget, the operating budget must be balanced. It's required by law. And then the city looks to build on our goal of providing high-quality services and maintaining sound financial standing. Ensuring quality service includes public safety, that's personnel, equipment, operational requirements, ensuring core functions, items like building inspections, infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, curbs, stormwater, sanitary sewer, recreational amenities, parks, and all the amenities therein. And then also internally, we have to ensure that the budget allows us for allows for responsible financial and workplace workforce management. We still have to run the city on a day-to-day basis. We look at the financial impact to residents and businesses, the value for the taxes paid, the optimal revenue and expense structure, mill and utility rates, and importantly, future obligations that could take the form of debt issued, that also could take the form of reserve levels. Finally, this year, one of the things we really focused on was attracting and retaining a quality workforce. We looked at pay in ranges for entry and labor positions, which we'll get into more in this presentation. And then, of course, the overall compensation and progression for the positions as we battle in a exceedingly complicated workforce and workplace market. So one of the themes that I wanted to hit on tonight first was forecasting. Watching for the effects of inflation on operating costs. So this is on the expense side of the budget. City is active in many markets, from consumer goods to industrial chemicals and materials. We purchase HVAC equipment, specialized items, supply chain-dependent items, and local items. Work is done with suppliers, vendors, and trends to forecast operating costs. Our finance director and her team start working on this early in the year and monitor those trends as bids come in and as we get more information and data. Secondly, we anticipate shifts in revenue on the revenue side based on potential economic data. The city is heavily reliant on sales tax for operations and capital budget items. We'll talk more about this throughout the presentation tonight. It's important to note that sales tax is the most volatile revenue source. It's vulnerable to both decreased consumer spending, inflation, and other options in the marketplace. And what I mean by that is we consider the growth in the county and the growth in the region. It would be naive to to not recognize the growth in the southern part of the county and that at some point, another grocery store, another home improvement store, another car dealership may develop, and we could lose share of the marketplace in regards to sales tax if that development occurs. We also work for the long-term health of the city, planning for the future growth, needs, and expectations. The second theme I want to hit on tonight is reserves. One-time use of reserves to accomplish a number of foundational shifts in the budget, we did that for the Twenty Twenty Four budget, and there are some reasons we'll get into. Reserves should never be used for ongoing expenses. The use of reserves should be to change a structure of something, to pay down something, to make an investment that could lead to lower operating costs, but not to subsidize operating costs that will still be there the next year and the reserves will be gone. So three things related to reserves, and again, I have more detail on this as well. Transitioning to pay-as-you-go payment management program. We discussed this with the City Commission at the February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three meeting, and I'll talk a little bit more about that tonight. Create a grant matching fund to increase the, to address the increasing availability of cost-share grants. The city has been successful in achieving grants. All of those grants have a matching requirement. And again, we'll talk about more of that. We do all this while still ensuring a stable reserve position. In light of reserve spending proposed for Twenty Twenty Four, budgeted reserves are set to thirty percent of general expenditures, which is the city's reserve target. The efforts that we take related to the reserves does not take the city below our reserve target. More specifically, proposed budget highlights. The allocation from reserves to go to transition to the pay-as-you-go annual payment management program requires one point three five million dollars in capital budgeted reserves. Commissioner Hengel, you asked the other night about our capital reserves. This is one of the use of those capital reserves. The allocation of one point five eight three million in reserves to fund a one million dollar grant matching fund. There's a lot going on in that sentence. I'll try to break it down for you. So we already have in Twenty Twenty Four, five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of the city's requirement of some matching grants. Most of this is the Vilas program, the the replacement of all the sidewalks between Tenth and Twentieth, the expansion of the road west of Twentieth Street. So that is obligated for Twenty Twenty Four. Furthermore, in the five years after that, we have about one point one five million in obligations for cost share. The reconstruction of Tenth and Limit, the city was successful in getting that grant. That doesn't come up till Twenty Twenty Five, but there's a significant cost share that the city has to come up with by by that time. So what the one million dollars does is it frees staff in the commission to pursue grants and not have to take those funds from existing operations. For example, if you're going to do a road project cost-share grant with the state of Kansas and your share, say you've got three million dollar project and your share was a half a million, normally, we would have to remove that from the payment management program for the year. So why we would get the good, the grant and the project, our annual payment management program would be decreased by five hundred thousand dollars. This use of reserves sets aside for allow us to to pursue those grants as they come up. The budget also allows for the continuation of all current city services and operations with no new positions or program expansions. We've done a lot of program expansions through some parks efforts, some stormwater efforts. We believe for Twenty Twenty Four that there is no program expansion needed nor new employees that are warranted at this time, and so we would continue to maintain what we have. The budget also allows for the full execution of all previously scheduled capital improvements projects, including but not limited to the sports court project at Cody Park, the trails allocation that the commission has put into place, and a new playground and parking lot at Southside Park. The budget also allows for the full pavement management, sidewalk, and curb programs at two point five million. That's roughly two million for pavement management, three hundred thousand for sidewalks, and a hundred and fifty thousand or so for curb replacement, give or take. Proposed budget highlights continued. The Twenty Twenty Four Employee Compensation Plan recommendation is a base five percent increase with an additional sliding scale increase for selected classifications. The sliding scale recommendation schedules the highest percentage of increases for the positions with the lowest pay scale and the lowest percentage increase for the positions with the highest pay scale. A little bit more detail on that. An investment of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in positions making less than roughly fifty thousand dollars annually, that's in addition to the cost of living increase. The positions include equipment operators, parks laborers, refuse collectors, cashiers, police and fire dispatchers, records clerks, as well as part-time positions in public works in parks, and the list is longer, aquatics, janitorial throughout the city. We have found that the competition at this level is nearly impossible, not only to recruit new people, but to retain those we have. We've seen local governments raise their rates. We've lost employees to the county. We've lost employees to neighboring cities as the rates at that lower level have really, really increased rapidly. And then a five percent cost of living for the balance of the city again at those higher classifications. Related to police and fire, if you'll remember, the City Commission allocated significant resources last year to adjust fire department pay scales. And so that went over well. Thank you for that, and they're very happy with that. The year before, we did the police department. So this was done in consultation with H. R., the finance director, both the police and fire chief, and we feel that this is fair and keeps us competitive in both public safety fields as well. So maybe burying the lead, although I don't think so, but I know what what'll attract attention. We can accomplish everything that was just stated with a two point six eight eight mil reduction. That takes the city from twenty-five point six five four mils to twenty-two point nine six five?
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure. Everything that was included before can be done at a recommended reduction of two point six eight eight mils from two point twenty-five point six five four to twenty-two point nine six five for city-supported services.
Yep, thanks.
The mil reduction is based solely on the current revenue and expense conditions as well as forecasted conditions in Twenty Twenty Four. I'm going to get into that a little bit more here in a minute. I will point out that the mil reduction does meet the state legislature's definition of revenue neutral for the city-supported mil levy. The proposal does not allow the city to capture growth in property tax at this point, and it does not account for property tax delinquencies. The delinquency rate is usually somewhere north of one and a half percent or so. Some of the rationale that the management team used to put the budget together. The commission has shown strong support for attracting and retaining staff consistently over time, and so that's why we felt comfortable with the large investment that was just outlined on the last slide. The commission has shown support for responsible use of operating reserves. We understood that reserves were getting a little bit high, and there's a couple of reasons for that. They had reached to the point where we knew that we, if we could find a responsible way to to spend down reserves and accomplish some city commission goals, we would do that. And that's what you've seen here tonight. Forecasting by staff had been conservative in the post-COVID economy. This explains some of the reserves. We tried to be cautious over the last two or three budgets in forecasting sales tax growth. And beyond that, for conditions that we're not entirely sure why, sales tax growth exceeded that exceeded our forecasts, in a good way, in a positive way. But that's how you end up with increasing reserves when your revenue comes in higher than estimates when you keep costs flat. Staff in the commission have been diligent about watching expenses to ensure that needs are provided for and program or project expansion are carefully considered. Every time a project expansion is considered, it's brought before the commission. And so we've had those discussions over the last two years. That's boiled down, that's need versus wants. Commission goals were incorporated into this budget. Input and feedback have informed needs and priorities laid out in the budget and in the capital program. I'm going to hit a little bit on sales tax. Sales tax revenue exceeded forecasts in Twenty Twenty Three and the trend and trending on the same line for Twenty Twenty Four, although we have just started to see the first slight slowdown in growth. Is that decreased consumer spending? Is that inflation decreasing where the price of an individual good is a little bit lower? So the sales tax collections and that cumulative effect would decrease the overall sales tax. Time will determine that as we continue to see information and data come from the state. We are, we acknowledge that this is a little bit aggressive to roll back the mil as much as as is proposed or as an option given to the commission. However, we believe that the city has an experienced budget team. This is my eighth budget as the city manager, and that we have multiple tools to modify expenditures to allow immediate response to unanticipated trends or activities. I was the manager during the COVID period, and we were able to take steps like freezing positions, freezing vacant positions, taking capital projects to a tiered system where we held off on certain projects as we watched revenue data come in. So we believe that we have all the tools available that if something dramatic happens, even with this proposed budget, that we would be able to adjust with no large detrimental effects to operations. Because the mil decreases is so sizable, I wanted to get into some of the factors involved in the mil reduction proposal or option, really. A stable and sustainable reserve position, brought about by careful consideration of expenses and projects over many years, we had the reserve position to allow us to do this. Sales tax revenue, which I just talked about, including countywide, countywide use, countywide use is internet sales tax. Local and local use, which again is local internet sales tax, is in excess of estimate. The two-year performance is tracking at about two to two and a half percent above forecast. So that's, that's where you see a lot of the the revenue that's allowing us to do this for the Twenty Twenty Four year. I think it's important to talk about the third item, the complete retention of all current revenue streams. The mil levy cut is based solely on the current and twenty-four forecasted conditions and is an issue that should be analyzed each year based on new information and data. Local governments are subject to mandates from other levels of government that can dramatically impact the shape and composition of the budget and tax structures without regard for local government's ability to provide service at levels expected by residents and businesses. Two specific examples, not passed but included in one of the final tax bills was the elimination of the local sales tax on groceries. We heard a lot about the state's elimination, stair-stepped, or all at once, the state's elimination of the sales tax on groceries. Folded into the tax bill at the end was the state eliminating local government's ability to sale, to put sales tax on groceries. However that shakes out in the future, there would have been no time for the city to adjust. That would have, had it passed, resulted in a one point two to one point six million dollar decrease in the city's sales tax revenue, which is the equivalent to four to six mils. The other issue that that was in the final tax bill that did not pass was, I'm not going to get into the the veterans' property tax because that was ended up being pretty minor. The one that was more concerning for the city was there were three specific industries that were going to have their property tax abated. Those would have been childcare centers, fitness clubs, and restaurants. The elimination of property tax on those entities would have had a a pretty big impact on the city without any time to adjust or plan for those. So without those revenue streams remaining intact, the recommendation would not have been for a roughly two point seven mil reduction. And then finally, commission direction to continue to provide services to ensure the city of Leavenworth is viewed as a good place to work and to focus on improvements over expansion. I do think it's my responsibility to show you mil reduction alternatives, what that would mean. A flat mil proposal, and I know nothing's final, but I I think you've seen that, I think the county was indicating that they were going to try to keep theirs flat. So a flat mil proposal for the city of Leavenworth would generate eight hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, an increase of eleven point six percent. Keep in mind, that's not the recommendation, but I wanted to show you what that would be. There is some talk about a constitutional amendment going on the ballot next November that would cap property tax increases at five percent. So I wanted to show you, if that was in place, what that would mean. That would mean less than half of that or an increase of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents in increased revenue from the year before. And just a few options of what what would the city do with that if the commission ever elected to do something like that? You could reduce the amount of reserves required for the grant matching funds or increase that grant matching fund. You could direct it to any number of things. I put could could go directly to roads, but you could earmark that you could put it directly for parks improvements or road improvements. You could direct all three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars just to mil and overlay. The commission has full discretion on those funds. And then finally, if we did add one position, you could fund an additional person for the Parks and Recreation Department to help maintain the increase in mission. They have not had an increase in their full-time personnel in more than fifteen years, despite having new restrooms, new trails, a new splash pad, new shelters, et cetera. The ultimate decision on the proposal was based on the specific economic condition for the Twenty Twenty Four, being able to accomplish the city's commission's directive for projects and goals, being able to address and adapt to potential inflationary and recession-based threats, being able to invest in staff positions- being able to invest in staff positions, and being able to provide a break to residents and businesses. That's why the ultimate proposal or the first option presented was a reduction of 2.7 mils. A couple of other quick notes. The management team does remain concerned. We talked about sales tax being a theme, that an increasing reliance, remains concerned that an increasing reliance as a portion of general fund revenue on sales tax makes the city more vulnerable to national economic trends. In the most recent update of the City of Leavenworth's credit analysis, Moody's Investor Services cautions that the city's reliance on economically sensitive sales tax revenue is a credit challenge. In addition, a portion of the growth in the sales tax is tied to the 1% countywide sales tax that does sunset in 2035. I know that seems like a long way out. In 18 months, we will be halfway there from when it was put in place. And also, this gets into the weeds a little bit, but I think it's important because this is not simple. It's a complex process. The allocation formula set by the state for countywide sales tax is based on two things. Your population in relation to the other cities and unincorporated parts of the county and your taxes levied. So as the rest of the county grows in population at a faster rate than Leavenworth, our portion of the countywide sales tax will slowly decrease, our percentage that we get. Additionally, if other entities like the county, Baser, Tonganoxi, keep their mil levies flat and we decrease ours, which is proposed, that is another reason, another way that our percentage of the countywide sales tax will also decrease. It's based on population and taxes levied. The management team does remain optimistic but cautious the continued increase of those sales tax because there is population growth in the county along with new growth that would generate new property tax revenues for entities that do not generally generate sales tax, thereby reducing the burden on existing properties. More clear, more clear hopefully, is that property taxes are the only method to bring about cost recovery in some of the areas the city is specifically pursuing for growth. Residential and industrial manufacturing. Residential does not generate sales tax. It does generate people. And industrial, which we are trying to fill in the business industrial park, does also not generate sales tax. So property taxes ensure that property owners or businesses, such as corporations that we would hope to put in the business park at some point, contribute to the upkeep and improvement of the local goods they benefit from. Finally, on property taxes, depending on where you live in the city, there are two different mil rates, whether you're in Lansing School District or Leavenworth School District. Regardless of where you live, the city of Leavenworth accounts for about 20% of your property tax bill. About one out of every $5 goes to the city of Leavenworth for city of Leavenworth operations. To put these into real dollars, this is last year. If in the city of Leavenworth you had a $200,000 house, we used to say $150,000, but I don't think those exist anymore. Your monthly portion of your property tax that went to the city of Leavenworth was $49.17. What does that provide? Police protections, snow removal, street repairs, community center, animal control, just all of the city services, parks, playground, capital improvements, health and safety inspections. Next year, if the proposed mil levy went into effect, you would save $5 a month on a $200,000 house. It would go from $49.17 a month to $44.02 a month. I do want to make an important point. Revenue neutral means revenue neutral to the city. It does not mean cost neutral to a property owner. And what I mean by that is it sets the revenue level for the city. So if you have a piece of property as a business or a residential property owner, and your piece of property went up 5%, 6%, you could actually pay less, if that makes sense, because the mil is lower. If your piece of property went up 15%, you will still pay more. There's a break-even point at what point you will, you will, not many people would pay exactly the same because it's a revenue, total accumulative property tax revenue to the city, not to the individual property owner. Again, I know that's complex, but I want to make sure that you're aware of that. So somebody could, we could, the city could go revenue neutral, and somebody could still say, my city portion still increased, and that could be the case. Now, there'll be quite a few that say, my city portion actually decreased because there is a break-even number. And keep in mind also that your overall tax bill, the city's only 20%. So if other entities remained flat or had a small cut or an increase, your overall tax bill would still go up even if the city decided to go revenue neutral. Just a couple of revenue highlights. I won't go through these in detail. They'll be here, and then we'll also post these with the minutes so the public has access to all this, and all this is in the budget book, too. This just encapsulates some of the stuff we talked about. The increased initial valuation, and the result is the reduction, sorry about that. The 2.689 reduction was what was recommended. Sales tax revenue over two years increased 8.34% from actuals to 24 budgeted. And the five-year trend has been about 4.97%. And then, as you can see, 4.97 average over five years, but then 8.34 over the last two years. So that is, that is a slowdown. That's 4.17 or 1.8% over the last two years. So it is, there is a little bit of a slowdown. This is, I think, important to look at as we talk about the percentage or the allocation of revenue by type. Last year, property tax was 20. This year, it's 19. Sales tax is increasing. And I think that's something that we need to, we need to watch. And our credit rating agency has said we need to watch as well. Revenue by type. Charges for service, a lot of that is due to the fact that we run utilities. We have a refuse department. We have a wastewater department, but it's still good information. It just goes to show you that there's, there's different ways to show the same information or slightly, slightly different information. Expense highlights. Utilities are budgeted to increase 1.64%, which is about the lowest utility increase we've seen in a while, which is good for the city. There's a couple issues that the city cannot control. Police and fire state pension system and capers, which is the state pension system for all their employees. That increase is sent to us by those entities, and the city has no say in that. That is, that is passed on. Health insurance costs. So we don't have information as, you know, if you've been through a couple of these budgets, you realize at this point, we don't have the final rate. But what we do is cap it at a pretty low number and then tell the commission, we will not come in over that. And if it does come in over that, we will change the plan to come in at that number or lower. Traditionally, we come in right at or a little bit below that number based on our experience with health insurance. And again, we talked about the compensation plan, and we can talk more about that on the 30th, or if you have any questions between now and then. General fund expenditures, these are general fund dollars, not CIP dollars, sales tax dollars, or related to enterprise funds. So police and fire, public safety is the driving force of expenditures for the city of Leavenworth. As you can see, of the general fund, that's 60% of the general fund budget. And by function, capital projects is the biggest portion of the city budget. But this takes everything into account, including capital projects run through wastewater, stormwater, and all of the projects that the city does, road, pavement management. The CIP, which is the five-year capital plan, is allocated for a number of bond-financed and pay-as-you-go projects, buildings, equipment needs, operating transfers, and infrastructure items. Projects included in the CIP are prioritized. Staff evaluation, commission goals, equipment, building, infrastructure conditions. Again, the commission's priorities and direction. The CIP represents a five-year look ahead. The program is evaluated on a yearly basis, and everything that is approved is brought back to the commission for ultimate approval. CIP is comprised of three sources of revenue. One-fourth of the city's local sales tax, the city's portion of the countywide sales tax. Why that's important is again, it sunsets. So bonding against a sunsetted revenue stream is something we won't be able to do here pretty soon. And then, of course, general obligation bonds, which we are attempting to move away from for the pavement management program, and all of the issuance costs and interest that come along with those. We'll be able to do more road work by going to the pay-as-you-go system with the pavement management program. Some of the considerations that we went through that you'll see in this book is infrastructure maintenance, a lot of maintenance, fixing what we have rather than expanding anything new. Continuing progress on quality of life amenities for residents and families. Splash park, trails, shelters, expansions of parks. Establishing a grant matching fund for required city contributions and properly equipping public safety operations with necessary equipment. A couple of the highlights you'll see on the June 30th. Cody Park Hard Court Sports renovation. This has been in the plan for a number of years. This is driven in some part by, a little bit by pickleball. It's also by, there's some dilapidated, unused structures out there, although it's still popular. Cody Park is extremely popular. And more use, better lighting, a more welcoming site, a place where certainly a lot of the groups that are dedicated to those outdoor events can come. We talked about putting a basketball court. We don't have one in the south half of the community. An outdoor basketball court for kids to be able to play and adults. South Side Park Playground and Parking Lot. This has been on the radar for a couple of years as we try to address some of the city parks that have not had a significant investment in quite a long time. We own the Rear Front Community Center and everything that goes with it. So there's a door replacement, the elevators is failing, lighting replacement. So there's costs of there of a little over $300,000. An aerial ladder truck, that is an ongoing debt service payment that we have. That piece of apparatus is over $1 million, but we bonded that project. And the Business and Technology Park, we continue to pay on the note related to that. Fire station number one, air conditioner replacement, IT upgrades. A lot of that is backend, the storage requirements and all the hardware and software associated with that. We did hear the commission had a desire to, along with trails, really take another crack at sidewalks and getting the sidewalk committee back up and running and really try to do infill development on sidewalks and improve some of the pathways through our neighborhoods. So just through growth, we were able to increase the sidewalk funds to $300,000 annually and continue the allocation of $45,000 a year for trails enhancement and expansion. That concludes the overview and themes. So what are the next steps? The process, if you'll notice, you may not have noticed, this meeting tonight was about two and a half weeks earlier than we normally do it. And we did move up the commission budget hearings to June 30th. We can't go any much faster than this. We're relying upon the state for information, the county for tax information. We have to wait for the state legislative cycle to end so we understand what the conditions are. But we have scheduled the city commission budget review meeting on June 30th at 8:30 a.m. in this room. And time, of course, would be allocated. That also gives us time, following that meeting, to get back to the commission and the public on specific questions. If you have scenarios you'd like us to run, we can certainly do that. I know tonight may have brought up a lot of questions. I ask that you collect those. And I will do our best to answer those before the meeting on the 30th. Probably be more efficient if you get those questions to us as soon as you can or schedule time to come meet with Roberta and I or whatever we need to do to make sure that we have all your questions answered. The budget books are before you, and those will be the draft budget that we'll look at on the 30th. So if there's any general questions, I'm not prepared to ask specific questions on like a dollar amount or anything like that. But if you have any specific questions about the information presented tonight, I'm happy to answer them.
Great job overall. Thank you to you and the staff. And also just want to let the public know, this is open to the public. So we encourage you all to please come out and participate. So it's, it's your tax dollars, so you can be informed and equipped. Anyone else?
Thank you, Roberta.
She's awesome.
She's amazing.
Yeah, thanks, Roberta. Thank you, Paul. Looks, I appreciate the notes and looking forward to the meeting. June 30th.
I appreciate your comment on the reserves as far as this goes. And the pay-as-you-go, I think, is one of the best things that we've, that you guys have worked on to get us better able to control what we borrow and pay out in interest. Thank you.
And also, last thing I want to say, I mean, it's great that we're looking at reducing property taxes and still being able to invest off in our city employees. I think that's amazing, so. That's it. Thank you. Well, that is the last item on the agenda. That concludes our study session. I would like to go around the table for any updates or comments, starting with our city manager, Paul Pram.
I don't have any time. Thanks.
Commissioner Martin.
Nothing of his time. Thank you.
Commissioner Hinkle.
The fund starts, and I hope everybody will become part of it. It's your money.
Commissioner Leonhardt.
No.
The only thing I have to say is what a great weekend. I know you're probably going to discuss it, too. The Juneteenth was a wonderful event, community event. I know Todd Thompson did a lot of work on it, and double ACP, Richard Allen, all of the churches. I know I'd be leaving a lot of people out. All of the organizations, the community organizations that work together. One thing I have to say is a couple of people came up to me and asked me, we talked about this earlier, what is Juneteenth? And, you know, I explained to a young man, Juneteenth is when the slaves were finally told that they were free in Texas. And when they were free two years before that, I mean, it was, it was, everything was signed two years before that. But that was when they were finally told they were free. And that's what has been celebrated in Texas ever since and in the rest of the country. And I think kids in school should know that. This was a young man that was in high school here. So I think that's important for people, people to recognize this as a federal holiday now. And I think they should know that. Everybody should know that. So that's just my comment.
Well, I appreciate it. And just want to say thank you to everybody that attended, participated. It was a true representation of unity in our community. So we all came together and fellowshiped, and we celebrated together collectively as one community. And so it's, it's our holiday. It's freedom for each one of us. And it's important that we continue to educate and encourage and remind people how far we came from so we can see how far we're going in life. And so just want to say thank you for everyone that helped sponsor the event, participated, and showed up. And it was great. And thank you all. And that concludes our city commission meeting. Thank you and God bless.